Excuse me, I skipped the real call. Like, hold up, Stan. Would you do the real call?
Mayor Getty.
I think I'm here, but I'm not sure.
Councilmember McArdle.
Here.
Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Jampgard.
Here.
Councilmember Olson. Councilmember Eric.
Here.
Councilmember Hollingsworth.
Here.
Councilmember Dietrich.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, Stan, let her go.
Oh, and Mayor, stand by one. Just a reminder, as you get up to make your comments, please give your name and address. And also, we're limited to three minutes. And our council rules of procedure call for only 20 minutes max. Comments for this ending session. But the mayor has decided to make it extended to 30 minutes. So please make your comments as brief as possible. If you're going to agree with the person that's already spoken, please just say I agree with Mr. Morris or whoever is speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Stan Morris, 219 East Center Street. That's over in Lakeside here in Shalane. So the concept that I'm going to present to you today is what I call Pandora's Box. So you're going potentially to vote for a TIF today. Next year, when the people that are optioning the beaut come to you and say, we want a TIF like you gave to Weidner and Campbell's, what are you going to do? Are you going to say to them, no? Because they're going to say, well, we don't have water tanks over there, just like you didn't have on the other side of the valley. And we're going to provide greater water pressure for Lakeside and South Shalane, which have poor water. And if you want us to throw in a few affordable building units, a few portable units, we'll do that too. So we're exactly like the one over on the other side of the valley. And you're going to deny us that? That's disparate treatment. You're not treating us equally. And Councilmember McArdle can tell you that the group that is comprised of Microsoft millionaires knows how to find a good land use law firm. And you'll probably find yourself in court. Because what's the downside for them to spend two or three or four million dollars to try to force you to give them the infrastructure in a TIF over on the other side of the valley? In comparison to what it's going to cost to build out, maybe 20, 30, 40 million dollars? They'll take that risk. The city will lose the attorney's fees. And you might end up having another TIF on the other side of the valley where you have to build out for them. Now, there are pros and cons to that. I don't know what the answer is. TIF is a relatively new thing. But you'll probably find yourself arguing up in the Supreme Court. So there's a downside for you. If you're sitting on the fence on this, think about the other people that want to develop in the valley that are going to come to you and want equal treatment. They're going to want the junior districts to ship their money over. And they're going to want the taxpayers of this valley and beyond through the library district and all the way up to Hecken to pay for their infrastructure because you've already given it to these folks over here. One of them, as I said last night, a $1.4 billion revenue last year. And I do not understand why you're requiring us to pay for this. Thank you.
Eli.
Thank you. Mary Signarelli, 300 South Third Street, Shalane. You've heard probably every argument possible in favor of not going forward with this TIF. But I've always been a strong supporter of the city council. In the 37 years that I've lived here, I have had no reason not to be. And I'm still a strong supporter. And as a council, as council members and as hospital commissioners, we should be working together in a partnership on all things Shalane as we go forward. And I know that you're, we've been in this, the commissioners have been in the position you were in before. We've been between a rock and a hard place. And when you have a room full of people, it's not a supportive group. I can, I can, I can tell you that. It's usually because people are upset about something. So I guess my only plea with you is that word on the street and on the radio, and when you talk to people, oh, everybody's already made up their mind. They made up their mind before they started talking about this. Just, I mean, take the time. There's still time. I know you have a June 1 deadline. It's not a magic number. Give yourselves more time. There's another year. It's been how many years in the making? Of course, the TIF has only been in place in the state two years. But you've got time to take and to deliberate a little further and make sure that the direction that you're taking is a good one for all of us, all the citizens, all the people in our district. Take the time and let's continue to work together and make this the best community we can make it. We're all here for that reason. So, thank you.
Byron Schmidt.
Hi, my name is Byron Schmidt, 17 Pippin Lane, Manson, Washington. So I moved here to Shalane in 2016. I was recruited by the hospital. Before coming to the hospital, I did my due diligence and reviewed finances for the hospital. I turned down other positions that were offered to me at other hospitals because their finances were poor and there was a poor outlook for those facilities. I now manage a team at the hospital of very highly educated laboratory professionals. I'm not the only one in my profession that reviews finances before making a job decision. And so when I'm trying to recruit and retain people and they can see hospital finances that are being diverted for capital infrastructure and trying to explain that to them or trying to have them see revenue coming that would otherwise be associated with the hospital going elsewhere, it's a tough pill. It's a tough pill for them to swallow. And there is potential harm. I mean, it's not a, it's not a facility, it's not a place in the hospital where we just can't have anybody. It is a essential, essential piece of healthcare in this community. Without the laboratory, you can't have the other pieces of the hospital function correctly or at all. We have a small team and I don't want to lose team members or not be able to recruit team members because of their concerns. The, the experts, quote unquote, that you hired from Stowe Development and Strategy, that gentleman expressed that he'd only done six of these TIFs before. He'd only advised on six of these. I would suggest that if you ever went to a surgeon and they'd only performed six surgeries before, maybe, maybe that's not the best person to go to. Maybe there's another expert that would be better, better served to provide that counsel about how to make sure that this is, this is really the best option for the city and this community. Looking at some of the other TIFs around the state, this is very different from some of those. And I don't want, I don't want this community to suffer because of, because of this decision. I think we have time to, to look at other good options. I think we have an excellent state representative in Representative Steele. He has been very, very helpful to the hospital district and the whole county, actually, in bringing, bringing funding from the state here. Thank you for your time.
Anna LaPorte.
Byron, that's a hard act to follow. Jordana LaPorte, 410 East Wood and Avenue. In the hospital finance world, they say a hospital dies of a thousand cuts. It's not one big thing that takes us out. It's all the little adjustments and changes that slowly bleeds us out. When the city required an unnecessary and costly change order to our new build, it was a couple of cuts. When your inspectors don't show up on time and delay our building projects, it's another cut or two. And when your mayor and city administrator threaten our EMS build, it is more than a few cuts. You are literally threatening our ability to provide efficient and financially effective medical services that your own citizens need and voted for. Last night, I had an interesting conversation with the mayor and I heard that the comment was repeated on the radio this morning. It's such, it's that it's such a small cost to the taxpayer, I'm so happy to pay it. It is this attitude that has caused Washington residents to be the 10th highest tax citizens in the nation. And that is without a state income tax. It's not, it's, excuse me. Politicians are nickel and diming us to death, one cut at a time. Just a little higher sales tax, it's only a 10th. Just a little more gas tax, it won't hurt. Just a little more real estate tax, no one will notice. You can slice and dice the numbers using estimates and variables to make your case. But the bottom line is, under our levy system, you will increase taxes on 8,000 residents in the valley you do not represent. Our board has always said, trust, but verify. I guarantee the junior taxing districts now have an in-depth knowledge of how TIFs really work. And their conclusion is, this is not the right answer. This is not the right time. You should delay the vote until other avenues of financing can be addressed and you have a clearer picture of the true risk, true risk of debt you are about to take on. I hope that the actual takeaway from these meetings for our future projects will be that the council takes into heart its statements about junior taxing districts being your partners and actually transparently working with us to make this a thriving community. Thank you.
Una Brown.
Hi, I'm Kim Brown, address 110 Apple Blossom. Similar to Byron, I manage a department at the hospital of specialized employees, the surgery department. And it's hard to get people to come into a small community. I understand the development needs. You know, Shalane is massively growing and we all appreciate that. But how fast do we want it to develop that we're able to handle it community-wide, which in part, in a large part, is the hospital itself? When we cut funding from the hospital by, by this TIF, this is a nonprofit organization. We're trying to just be in the black to pay our employees to be here, to have enough employees for each of these departments to care for this community. And I feel like that we're being asked to cover costs that developers should be covering in part, at least in part. I'm not exactly sure of the background of, of the lack of water in the current development. But I think asking nonprofit hospital, fire, library to try to cut further back when we struggle as it is to, to meet our, our bills that are required by, by government and to keep employees that are necessary to keep the hospital running. I think it's such a big decision. I cannot understand how it can't be put off to help us work together to come up with the funding. Because, you know, as Jordana said, we all are on the same team. We all want to, to meet the needs of the community in, in varying ways. And I just, I think rushing to a decision that could have detrimental effect on the community and the hospital would be a mistake. And so I'm just asking, asking that you guys would consider taking a pause and letting us work with you to do what's best for the whole entire community, us as healthcare professionals to care for them and you, and you with your jobs as, as the council. So that's my, my ask is that you would consider that. Thank you.
Jane.
Jane Jedwobny, 106 Monte Carlo Drive. A TIF often can make a city's financial decisions less transparent by separating them from the normal budget process. We've already seen less transparency in this entire interaction. I believe your diverting city tax revenues from EMS, fire, hospital, libraries, and the cemetery is at the very least short-sighted and likely is going to be very destructive. This TIF works to alleviate the burden on developers by taking money from those I mentioned. It does not build community trust. It does not build community partnerships. It's only going to serve to fracture those relationships. And that is counter to your role of serving the needs of the people who already live and work here. The state of Washington has given the hospital considerable funds so we can get Lake Shalane Health EMS into a building on the new hospital grounds. This is something I think we all agree is critical to have happen because we know that every minute counts in saving lives. Well, you, the city, have told us that we're not going to be able to build that property unless we get our own, build our own water cistern or the TIF passes. Frankly, this sounds a bit like a shakedown to me. And putting politics over lives is a really sad commentary on the ethics of this council. Thank you.
Brian.
I'm Kinks, 71 Birchwood Lane, Manson, Washington. It's kind of a sad day that, that I have to stop in the middle of my workday to come in and complain about something that the city of Shalane's doing when I'm a Manson resident. But as a Manson resident, this is going to affect me drastically. Doesn't seem like the transparency has been really there. The junior districts really had to dig in and ask the hard questions to get the real answers. Everything seemed to be glossed over. And in Manson, most people in Manson don't have any idea that this is even going to affect them. Oh, that's the city of Shalane. The guy today, I was telling him what was going on. He goes, oh, that's the city of Shalane, it won't affect us. And I said, yes, it will. It will drastically affect us. Our taxes will be raised because we fall in the hospital district. If there's a two-alarm fire, who's going to respond? If there's a large automobile accident, there's already too many cars on the road. So if there's a large automobile accident, EMS is going to have to come as well as our fire district. So it does affect us drastically out in Manson. You know, unless, for some reason, we're going to be exempted from the tax increase because we don't live in the city of Shalane. I'm not sure that any, anyone in the valley is for subsidizing a for-profit company that, to help them out. I mean, I grew up in Shalane. I loved how Shalane was really a small town. We can't say it's a small town anymore. It doesn't even really have the small-town feel anymore, unfortunately. And it's just going to get worse. Try driving right now, you know, towards Lakeside with the school letting out. And I mean, it's, it's traffic, we've got traffic jams in Shalane and, and do we really need more cars? Everything's just, seems like it's steamrolling in the wrong direction. And I hope that you guys would, you know, consider the whole valley and not just the improvements for the future and the, the future residents of, you know, of Shalane. That, and that you take accountability for decisions, you know, for the whole valley. Because that's really what it's coming down to. Thank you.
Alana. I'm trying to read my writing. I don't really, well, to begin with, so. Mayor and Star.
I'm Marlena Morningstar. I am the 2023 Washington State Nurse of the Year for the Central Washington area. I'm currently the House Supervisor and a longtime emergency room nurse for Shalane Health here in Shalane. The TIF method of funding is new and was adopted here, as you know, in 2021. And it's intent to spur growth in areas that are struggling. Shalane is hardly struggling to grow. Our concern as essential service providers lay in the fact that funds diverted from, from our EMS and the hospital district will negatively impact the EMS services as well as the hospital bottom line. If passed as a first-line attempt at funding this project diversion of our levied funds will continue over a quarter of a century, long after you and I are past in our service to this community. You're voting on this appropriation of fund before exhausting other potential avenues. The promised health, help of our CEO, Aaron Edwards, may guide you to more responsible sources of funding. The TIF should not be your first line and your first attempt at infrastructure funding. In the emergency department here in our small town, we have a unique situation as rural healthcare providers. Imagine your family member rolls in on our EMS, with our EMS crew because they've had a heart attack, they've been in an accident, and one nurse meets you at the door. Thank heaven that EMS has brought them because they stay and help. If your, if your person comes through the door and they don't come by EMS, then I am there alone. You've said that you will not help us build this facility with EMS on our property. They have to stay far away from us. But yet I use EMS when I'm in trouble and your family member is in trouble. They're part of our crew in the emergency department. We critically need them on-site to be able to do our work. Shalane is a, as you know, a small community. And with that, we have unique needs as healthcare professionals. In one day, I might work in the emergency department. I'm a certified emergency nurse. I also might catch a baby that's just been rapidly born on another floor. I also will field calls from the community and answer their questions.
I'm sorry, but your three minutes are up. Please, thank you.
Please don't reach into the pockets of citizens of this community without protecting us. I want you to go in with your gloves on. Thank you.
Us. Jones.
I have a lot of questions.
Russ, name it, name in the address.
Russ Jones, 29 Chestnut and Shalane. As I watch your expressions up there on the council and you're shaking your heads and, and stuff, I have to wonder, how well do you think you've educated the community on this subject? I don't believe your consultant has done a very good job of educating anyone. We first saw the term add-on value last week. I went back through the consultant's original report, couldn't find it anywhere. Pretty critical issue. Certainly wasn't explained in the earlier report. So we, as junior taxing districts, have been chasing our tails trying to catch up and get accurate information. It's been very difficult to get good answers. Oftentimes, the answers we get aren't to the questions we asked. There's still a lot, too many questions out there for this to move ahead. I don't think I'm going to change your mind, but be that as it may. I was looking at your pack-up for today. It still contains bad data based on old levy rates. But I would start with your legal premise for the TIF at all. It says that without the TIF, these developments would only develop 35%. My question is, okay, if they have to do their own reservoirs, are they really going to build stuff that will serve only 35% of their planned development? That doesn't make economic sense. I, I just think that's a little disingenuous. The way I understand it currently, and my understanding is changing frequently, is an equal amount of, an amount equal to the TIF dollars is going to be paid by the parcels outside the TIF. So is that correct? Not getting a read on that, okay? So one of my primary concerns along with this is whether or not the revenue is going to be sufficient to repay your bonds. And I know you're saying you're not, not going to issue the bonds right away. I had hoped to see some serious stress testing on this, but unfortunately, some communication didn't work out right. So we didn't get that information. But all in all, do you have to issue a permit this year for these developments? If not, and their water system plans aren't matching up to yours, don't issue the permits. Give this thing more time so that the community can adequately understand what's going on here and clear up some of these issues that aren't clear and get a different consultant. Thank you.
That being said, we've listened to you very attentive over the period of time. And the reason maybe some of the body English isn't as correct as it should be is some of those things aren't exactly true on both sides of the fence. So that being said, I wish you would listen attentively with an open mind on the presentation made by staff.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, first of all, again, thank everybody, thanks to everybody for coming and especially your views. That's how government works, so appreciate that. Just to be clear, we've been looking at this for, with staff and council for quite a while. And they've gathered a lot of information, analyzed it backwards and forwards, upwards and downwards. And so they've been working hard to make sure that they're going to do what's best for the community. Just to be clear again, and some of you understand this, but all the council is voting on today is to establish the area and approve the ordinance that establishes the area. That's all they're voting on. Believe me, this council is very, very responsible. And they're not going to let the city go into debt without thorough analysis of both current and future effects on that and the benefits and the drawbacks. And this will give council a chance to look at a range of options. And also, we've heard about future opportunity, yes. Why delay, why not delay? Because we could miss some future opportunities that take place in the next year. So the final thing, point to emphasize, and I'm sure some of the council will talk about this, is the fact that this will benefit not just Apple Blossom Center, but also as much as 35 to 40% of the overall Shalane community. So it's not just for development per se. So with that, I would like to start off with our brief presentation that we're going to, staff and our consultant will make today. And then we'll turn it over to council for discussion. The first part of the agenda will be to talk about the importance of and the reason for the, the water system. So Jake, do you have some, some comments on that, please?
Thanks, Wade. Share my screen here. All right, just wanted to spend a few minutes. I think most are familiar with the projects that are included in the proposed TIF, but wanted to spend a couple of minutes just going over them briefly. And then I'll pass it off to Bob Stowe and his team. There are five projects included in this, the TIF. You'll see the TIF areas kind of approximately highlighted in green here on the right hand of your screen. The projects are listed in priority order. The first project is the reservoir and booster pump station project. This project puts storage, water storage on the north side of the TIF district at elevation higher than the current zone serves. It would store approximately 1 million gallons of water, improve fire flow substantially and the ability to meet maximum demands of that zone. Would also improve service pressure, excuse me, service pressures of many of the residents in that zone and facilitate connections to the North Shore residents that you can see the benefiting area would be highlighted in blue there. The next two projects include the transmission of that water through the north side of the TIF, ultimately connecting to Noceum Road. The second project takes it to Bradley Street and the third project takes it to Noceum Road. The fourth project, of which we likely don't believe we will need funding for at this point through any TIF revenue, is the airport water line project in its proportion that's included in the area of the TIF. And the fifth project would be in Eisenhardt. You can kind of see it on the lower right side of the green area there. It's just kind of bolded in purple. Shorter project that would complete a loop the city's been working on to improve transmission capacity and fire flow in that water zone. So I guess that's, I believe most are familiar with those projects, but that's a brief summary of what's included in the TIF. Bob, I'm going to share my screen and, or continue to share my screen to see if I can get your presentation up here. Wrong one, I apologize. That's last night.
Great, thank you. Could you advance to the second slide, please? Thank you. So I want to provide Bob Stowe, Stowe Development Strategies. And joining me here on virtually is Morgan Chuck, my colleague. And Morgan's available for questions. But I just want to provide a very brief overview for the council. Apologize for the background noise. Apologize for the background noise, I'm in an airport. But and then talk a little bit about the purpose of the ordinance, but as you know, it's a new law allowing for the use of property tax revenue generated by new development to help pay for the needed public improvements within an area. It's not a new tax and the uses and uses the existing tax levies already in place. TIF is also a law that was designed not to create any harm or really no harm to the junior taxing districts. Uh, that was a principal premise of the law. Junior taxing districts will receive the same amount of property tax revenue from private development with and without forming a tax increment area. And this has been confirmed by not only our analysis, but also by the Washington State Department of Revenue. So there's no net decrease or increase in revenue to the junior taxing districts. Next slide, please. So some of the key elements of a tax increment area ordinance include, one, it establishes the tax increment area from which to receive the tax increment allocation revenues from new development, again, to help pay for the infrastructure improvements. An important note here is that a TIA or tax increment area may not be changed after the adoption of the TIA ordinance. And so it'll exist for the period of time that you're still paying for any of the public improvements. The ordinance would also identify the public improvements improvements that were just reviewed that will be paid for or financed with a tax allocation revenues from the TIA. And if the city intends to issue bonds, including the estimate of the maximum amount of those obligations. Another important note is city may not add additional public improvements to the to the project after the adoption of the ordinance. Um, you may expand, and this is language directly from state law, the city may expand, alter, add to the original public improvements when doing so is necessary to assure that the originally approved improvements can be constructed or operated. Another important note is the adoption of the TIA ordinance is not an approval to issue debt. A separate council action will be required for any debt issued by the city in connection with the tax increment area. The project analysis indicated that the city would likely issue debt and two issuances with $9 million being the initial issuance for the reservoir and then would monitor development readiness and market conditions to determine how much, if any, additional debt would be issued based on the revenue projected within the TIA. Next slide, please. So there there's a certain number of, also, let me go back to the the previous slide. There's a couple of points I didn't cover. Also establishes a sunset date for the tax increment area, which can be no more than 25 years. If debt is issued for a 20-year period when debt is issued, if it is, the TIA would expire at the at the conclusion of when that debt is fully paid off. It also imposes a deadline by when the construction of the public improvements must begin. And that's a deadline that is within five years into the future following the adoption of the ordinance. That could be also extended for good cause. Next slide. So there are several findings that the ordinance makes and is required by state statute. One is that the public improvements proposed to be paid for financed with the tax allocation revenues are expected to encourage private development within the increment area and to increase the AV of the real property within the increment area. Two, private development that is anticipated to occur within the increment area as a result of the proposed public improvements will be permitted consistent with the permitting jurisdictions, applicable zoning and development standards. Uh, third, the private development would not reasonably be expected to occur solely through private investment within the reasonably foreseeable future without the proposed public improvements. This is the the referred to BUT4 analysis or BUT4 requirement. And then finally, the increased AV within the increment area that could reasonably be expected to occur without the proposed public improvements would be less than the increase in the assessed value estimated uh, from the proposed development with the proposed public improvements. There's also references in the ordinance to that completed regarding the completed project analysis as well as a review letter from the Office of the State Treasurer, which has concluded by its findings that the city's project analysis meets the conditions of state law. There's also information regarding the public notices, the completed briefings that the city has conducted in accordance with with the state law. And finally, although the tax increment financing is designed not to harm any of the junior taxing districts, the ordinance also references, um, a belt and suspenders approach, if you will, uh, by the negotiation of mitigation agreements with Fire District Seven and EMS Hospital District Four prior to the issuance of any debt for the TIF infrastructure improvements based on the service impacts, if there are any, following 95% occupancy of of Apple Blossom Phase One. And that concludes my presentation, Mayor, and both myself and Morgan Shook at Eco Northwest are available to address any questions that council might have.
Uh, Bob, this is Councilman Olson. Could you clarify the maximum number of TIFs that a jurisdiction can have? And what is the maximum bonding capacity the city of Shalan has for for doing a TIF?
So a jurisdiction can, at any one time, can form two tax increment areas uh, provided that those two areas do not overlap and do not exceed $200 million of assessed value at the time that they're formed or 20% of the jurisdiction's assessed valuation.
Or is bonding capacity, uh?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, so the bonding capacity as referenced in the city's project analysis is close to uh, 26 million, $23 million based on the assessed valuation. Uh, non-voted debt that the city could issue is a is a percentage, 1.5% of the city's total AV. And that generates the, I believe, the $23 million of debt capacity. Um, so if you were to issue, if you were to issue $16 million, I'm sorry, it's $24 million, 253,524 in total debt capacity projected in 2023. Um, if you were to issue $16 million with the two issuances, you'd have remaining just over $4 million in 2023 uh, figures. That, of course, changes year to years as your AV grows, so does your ability to issue non-voted debt.
And that 4 million would be reduced by the 3 million that we already have in process.
That's correct, it's, that's correct. You have 24 million, you already have less outstanding non-voted debt of about $4 million, so you have a balance of 20 million. Um, minus then the 16 million that you could issue results and then just over $4 million of remaining non-voted debt.
So my point is that this project pretty well consumes the maximum capacity that we can do under a TIF. Again, John, that's if the council voted to actually go the full monty, which, you know, at this point, I wouldn't recommend that until we saw that things were happening like they would, and to this point, we'd probably do less, you know, maybe half of that, so. And before we go any further, just a couple of clarifications I should have mentioned at the beginning. The ordinance that you guys have in front of you, we had to make several formatting changes, some other minor language changes, one of which that I heard somebody speak up in the back, they were right. They replaced EMS Hospital District Four with the correct name, which is Shalan County Public District Number Two. Thanks to Brant for that. Okay, well, we missed that one, we'll make sure we clean that up as well. Thank you. Okay, at that point, Mayor Council, it's so up to you all to go ahead and discuss, ask questions, either the staff or obviously Bob and Morgan, so over to you.
Bob, I have a question regarding the ordinance. If this is approved this evening, do we still have until the end of this year to repeal that ordinance? If we decide through further conversations, it's not a direction we want to go?
Yes, you can repeal the ordinance at any time, certainly before or prior to any issuance of debt. Um, and that would expire the the TIA.
And if we did pass the ordinance this evening, this afternoon, does, is there any impact to the 2023 property tax revenue collections that all taxing districts receive this year?
I don't, there shouldn't be any any impact. No debt will be issued and no taxes will be allocated to the city if it, if you were to expire the TIA prior to the end of the year.
So is it correct to say if we pass this ordinance tonight, it's one mechanism in a funding of this project? Not the only one, but we have until December 31st essentially to continue this discussion without any impact to the city or junior taxing districts?
Certainly. If you were able to find another source of funding between now and the end of the year for these improvements, you would, you would not necessarily need to issue the issue any debt and therefore it could expire the TIA.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Peter. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
So basically, what I'm getting from all this conversation, I think this is, there's a lot of misinformation floating around. This tax increment area is fundamentally a funding mechanism to fund a water system. Yes, Shlan's not having any trouble growing, we're having trouble supporting the growth with our infrastructure. And what we're trying to do is get ahead of the game a little bit um, and not only be able to benefit the developments like the the EMT facility at the hospital, which I strongly support, but also to handle the the new growth at Apple Blossom Center and also increase pressure throughout our whole east and north side of Shlan. And so to me, uh, we have ability to make sure or mitigate any impact for our junior tax districts to make sure that they're not losing money and we're not raising taxes on anyone. This is merely something for us, is a mechanism to allow us to do this water system improvement. The second thing is with the implementation, you know, people, I saw comments today in some of the emails and that we were raising taxes and we're not. And, you know, the reason that the property taxes have been going up is the value of the housing in our area. And it's skyrocketing. And so Apple Blossom Center with their their apartment developments will be able to help slow down the the uncontrolled growth of 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 the raising of the property values. And so this is actually going to mitigate that. Um, so a lot of the complaints I'm hearing don't seem to be lining up with the facts. And is, am I correct?
Well, I would say that the the improvements, the the allocated revenues going to pay for the TIF infrastructure improvements are largely paid for by the property owner's development in this case within the East Shalan area within the TIA. So new development in that case is paying for those improvements.
Correct. It's not affecting like a tax increase across the board. If we didn't do this, we'd have to increase, you know, utility bills for everybody to pay for this type of improvement. I mean, we only have like two ways to fund it unless we get a grant.
True, because the legislation was designed not to create any harm amongst any junior taxing district um, as well as paying for improvements. Um, there is a scenario that there's some additional uh, tax that's being paid based on the levy rates within the district. It's a, it's likely a small amount and the majority of that's coming from the TIA. But in order to pay for the improvements, um, there is a small amount that is continuing to be paid by the the districts as well at the district uh, uh, AV and property owners. Um, the majority of that is likely coming from the TIA itself. And Morgan Shook's on the line, too. He can, he may be able to provide some more clarity and depth to that issue, that new, that new nuanced issue.
But the last comment I wanted to make was, you know, we are not subsidizing these big developments. What we're doing is we're trying to get ahead of them. And then there's a term called latecomer agreements where they actually pay for part of this later on as they hook up to it. Instead of building their own water system, they would build, they would connect to our new system and they would pay for that. And so not only do we have the income coming in from the tax area, but we're also having the ability to to, uh, ask the developers to pay a portion of this water system as a latecomer agreement. And, uh, so to me, fundamentally, this comes down to we have a problem with not enough water and too much demand in the growth. And we only have a couple of options. And I think, you know, after listening to all the facts, as long as we mitigate the damage or any issues with the junior tax district, this is the best way forward. You know, and we haven't, we're not going to agree to any type of, uh, you know, bond now, we're going to continue to research this, working with the junior tax districts to make sure that we can move forward and and build a consensus. So I I think that this is, um, in my opinion, although it's somewhat confusing, is still the best way forward. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Question, so if we pass this ordinance and apply for, I'm not sure who can answer this, grants, if, would this affect our eligibility at all? Say, well, you've applied for a TIA, so I see you guys might have something else in the hopper, so no, that's not gonna, okay.
Like, uh, a little clarification, I think Peter was talking about a latecomer agreement, uh, associated with this.
There is provisions in the city's code to, um, cost recover on infrastructure through a latecomer's agreement. I believe the city would need to evaluate if that's a possible option for this. Um, and whether it's in something legitimate, applicable specifically to a TIF. It's probably a question we'd need to ask our attorneys.
And then question probably for, uh, Mr. Shook. If we were to postpone this, um, I'm curious about the implications, um, for the, for the financial picture. The, if we were to pass this today, uh, the TIF, the base would be uh, based on the current 2023 valuation. And then if we were to do it next year, it would be based on 2024's assessed valuation, which would include only structures that were complete and permitted. Is, is that complete and permitted as of the end of this year? Is that, is that correct? And 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 maybe give us a, a little, a little handle on what the implications would be if we were to postpone adopting the TIF.
And just let me, I'll just answer the first part of that. If you, if you decide not to adopt the ordinance and have that ordinance be effective June 1 of this year, the next available time that that ordinance would, uh, be effective, if you made that decision, would be June 1 of 2024. And so whatever development takes place between now and June 1 of 2024 would not be included in any increment value AV. Therefore, that would become the base. If X millions of dollars of development occurred, that would not be able to, you wouldn't be able to utilize any revenue stream. Uh, and so effectively would lose that development opportunity or you lose the revenue associated with any development that occurred prior to June 1 of 2024.
And that would be development that was complete and permitted, um, by June of 2024?
Well, the permitting issue is just a matter, that's, that's more of a matter of the city code and city regulatory issues. Um, it's more a matter of the the taxation, if that development occurs and the it's assessed, even during construction, um, there'll be likely some assessment of the value, even though there may not be an occupancy permit yet. Um, that, that will impact the revenue stream based on the project analysis that we've conducted. But in your second part of your question was certainly, um, if you increase the value of a TIA and it starts to bump up against that $200 million, um, $200 million threat. $200 million threshold in the statute, you may need then to adjust your boundary in order so that you're not going over that 200 million.
Yeah, this is Morgan. I think Bob answered that pretty succinctly. The only thing I think I would add is that the reason for the June one cutoff is because we have this staggered system in Washington with property taxes, right? So you, the assessor comes around and says, this is, you know, your 2023, oh, sorry, 2020, 2023 certified values that they use for computation for 24 taxes, which is why we have this, the June date. And the difference between the base value and the increment value, that's really a function of just what Bob said, what the assessments are. That doesn't pay any attention to whether you build anything or not. The assessor just says, what's the value to 20, what's the value in 2023? And then subsequently, what's the value in 2024? And it says, okay, well, the base value was set in 2023, whatever the value is in 2024, that's your increment value.
I have a request. As much as I dislike bar graphs and the rest of it, you had a presentation that was put out to the different districts about how with or without TIFF, the rate of money generated by the property taxes was to show that actually it would probably be better as possible to show that. I know graphs are hard to understand, but if we take a shot at that, maybe we can better understand that this is a benefit, not a negative.
Yeah, I don't know if you need to show the chart, but I think the thing you're alluding to is really the impact that the jurisdiction, any property tax led by a jurisdiction in Washington is works under with respect to the 101% limit factor. So by law, what is regulated in Washington most directly is the levy. So how much a jurisdiction can collect? And that's limited at the what they call 1% or 100% limit. So you can only collect basically 1% more than you collected the previous year plus a value, what they call the new construction add-on value, which is basically how much new construction assessed value had times last year's levy rate. And that factor was put in the state law, both from initiative 747, but then later codified after the state Supreme Court ruling to basically approximate levy growth of new population. And so the new construction piece that you're alluding to is under TIFF, right, that the city is trying to enable is more new construction. And the benefit to the taxing, all the property tax, regular property taxing jurisdictions is that new construction then allows them to grow their levy above that 1% so they can try to keep pace with their sort of cost increase. You know, even if they're just delivering the same level of service, that just costs more because of inflation.
And Mayor, there are a number of charts and tables within the packet that I know is produced for the city council. Everyone responds differently to different graphics, so we tried to show a number of different ways to illustrate how there will be no harm to the junior taxing districts, how TIFF works. And that's in the packet. So if staff wanted to bring, I don't have the ability to share my screen. But if staff wanted to bring up any of that council packet, we could dive deeper in into more of those charts if you think that would be beneficial.
There's another way of just looking at this, which is the data that the Department of Revenue has confirmed as being accurate. If you look at the property tax revenue that would occur without TIFF over 12, 13 year period was $23,872,489 for fire. We'll use one district as an example. The revenue brought in with the TIFF is $26,28,524. So there's an actual positive increase in revenue to the junior taxing district. So it goes back to kind of the the comment that we keep hearing that property tax revenue is being diverted from the junior taxing districts. And I just can't find the data that supports that claim. In every scenario that we've been thrown to run, every the sky is falling scenario, there is no impact to the junior taxing district. And that's the blue line is your revenue from that occurs without the TIFF. Blue line is no TIFF. So this is what goes to the junior taxing district. The yellow line is what goes to the junior taxing district with a TIFF. The orange line is what the difference between the yellow and the orange is what goes to pay for the infrastructure. So the what I hope gets cleared up is this use of diverting funds or harm to the junior taxing districts because it's just not true. And so we need to get away from some of that language to be able to have a conversation around what we're voting on tonight and using this as a tool. And I want to go back to something that I think it's Ms. Morningstar, the nurse of the year, if she's still here, that TIFF should not be our first line of funding. And I couldn't agree with that more. And even in conversations with Representative Steele, this TIFF ordinance is a one mechanism in a toolbox that over the next several months is one of many things that can be used to fund this project. And to be clear, I think we've all had several conversations around what this project is. And in my mind's eye, it's a booster pump station and it's a reservoir. And those are two things that this community desperately needs, not only for fire protection, but also for the water service and our infrastructure that is experiencing so much demand. But for those projects to move forward, we have seven months to continue conversations that I think still need to happen, which is a very detailed mitigation agreement with the junior taxing districts as well as setting a date for us to come back to this to review whether we're moving forward or we're repealing this by the end of the year. There's no harm, no action, no property tax being taken, no impact to budget to move forward on the ordinance for this evening. What it does allow us is if the one of the projects starts to happen, we are not losing out on potential revenue that can be applied to this project. We've even talked about how do we look at sales tax revenue from the construction of those buildings as another avenue of payment towards these projects. So this council is looking at not only TIFF as a singular piece of funding for this project. It's one piece of a larger toolbox, one mechanism that we're looking at. And what we lose out on potentially, there's a risk to this overall project versus approving an ordinance tonight and allowing us with guidelines and deadlines that we need to come back to this and continue having this conversation to make sure that everyone feels comfortable with with this project. So I look at it as what do we lose out by not moving forward tonight? And what do we gain if we move forward? And with no impact to any of the taxing districts, if we move forward tonight, I would like to see us spend the next several months coming to a very detailed mitigation agreement, which has specifics in it as well as a review on December one to approve or repeal this ordinance.
I'd like to read a part that's in the risk assessment and mitigation plan that's on, it was on page eighty seven or near there. TIFF is a powerful tool available to local governments for encouraging development. Using local property tax revenues to finance certain public improvements can encourage and generate the desired or envisioned private development. However, using the TIFF has risks. The largest risks are that number one, the expected private development does not occur, occurs slower than expected and or the type of private vertical office retail housing development and its magnitude is less than expected. And two, the cost projected for the infrastructure improvements is higher than projected. These risks impact the expected revenues to be generated within the TIA or the cost for the identified public infrastructure improvements. If risks are not mitigated, a local government must then use other sources of revenue to pay for the public improvements. The city will be obligated to pay for the TIFF infrastructure, even if little or no private development materializes. As stated previously in this report, the city anticipates issuing LTGO bonds, which will be backed by the city's full faith and credit, meaning bondholders can make a legal claim against the general revenue of the city if a default occurs. Other related risks include overinvestment of infrastructure, funding by TIFF, which can waste limited tax dollars for other uses. I do want to thank staff for all this massive pile of work and it's, I want to thank citizens for participating in the process. This is a new law that's still being tested. The city has current issues with other infrastructure which could be negatively affected by taking up to 16 million in loans, which is about 75% of the city debt capacity. If we had some partnership agreements in hand with developers, the risk would be lessened. I think Shalan County is going to go around Microsoft because they know they're coming. I think Douglas County is going to go around some data centers because they know they're coming. The other, I think other financing options need to be explored further. The state treasury report, even though they're kind of generic comments, there's specific language in there regarding our current economy and possible interest rate issues. The first several years of a loan would have a shortfall that would be, need to be paid by the city in any, in all of these scenarios. Mitigation for junior taxing districts is complicated and not unknown, even though the law is designed to do no harm. When you can see fear on the faces of educated, knowledgeable junior taxing district personnel, it should mean something. It is important to me that we listen to citizens and consider their concerns. And if that means waiting until next year to form the TIA, then I think that is okay. So I'm in support of tabling this vote.
I have a prepared comment or a series of comments. The city of Shalan major water system upgrade proposal with the tax increment financing TIFF has certainly garnered the interest of the community. The council appreciates and thanks all who have become involved in this process. I personally offer the following personal observations from all of our discussions over the last year. I've got three binders full of papers that I've been working on, as has the rest of the council, with reports, studies, legislation, public comments, fiscal analyses, et cetera. Point number one, there is an obvious need for the upgrade across much of the community due to the lack of water service to many properties, low capacity for both domestic, commercial, public use and for the fire protection and for low water pressures. Two, community-owned infrastructure systems are designed, built, financed, and operated, maintained, and repaired or replaced by the community, not the individual. That is what community or cities are all about. Similar to community roads, electrical grids, sewer systems, and so forth. Number three, today's council vote is only for the establishment of the tax increment area, the TIA. Nothing more. To establish the primary service area of benefit, there will of course be spillover benefits to other areas outside the TIA. The full details will then be worked out over the next five years. Four, the council has been discussing our existing complex, piecemeal, inefficient, costly to maintain and operate system for over a year now. Five, this major water system upgrade proposal has been brought forward by our professional and qualified public works, planning, finance, and administration staffs. The council has an obligation to consider and value the advice of our staff, and we do. Number six, the state legislature in about 2003, in response to public pressure, has limited the revenue that the city can receive from property taxes to an increase of just 1% per year. Meanwhile, like you, the city is experiencing an inflation rate on construction and everything else of about 10%. How do you run a business on revenue increases of 1% and the cost of doing business that is increasing by 10%? State legislature, number six. Number seven, the state legislature in response to the financial needs in cities, counties, and ports, districts, has offered the complex and difficult to understand TIF program to finance infrastructure with revenue directly from the value created by that infrastructure. Number eight, the city of Shalan, with consultation from TIFF experts and our own grant writing consultant, have determined that TIFF may be the best value to fund $16 million out of the 27 million needed for this water system upgrade. Number nine, staff and council have pursued and will continue to pursue a variety of financing options to replace TIFF if possible, including rate increases across the city, impact fees, local improvement districts, state and federal grants. Number 10, it is important to keep in mind that life and development depend upon water. If financing for the water system upgrade is unattainable, then we must consider that the city will out of necessity need to limit development permits and that some or all of the falling could happen due to the lack of water or lack of water pressure or fire flow. First, North Shore developments from the Darnell Pump Station out to Rocky Point, including the Lookout Business District, which has just been launched, and homes and other projects in the area may be denied building permits due to lack of redundancy. Two, Highland Farms development could be denied developer permits. I actually put these in letters. C, Lake Hills could be denied, be denied further development permits. D, Lower Union Valley could be denied further development permits. Suncrest, which notoriously has low water pressure, will be unable to attain the adequate water pressure required by the health department and thus could be denied future development permits. Apple Blossom Center West Phases One, Two, and Three, including affordable housing, could be put on hold. G, the Shalan Valley Housing Trust Riverview Affordable Housing Project may be put on hold. Hospital expansion and EMS relocation will need to be closely analyzed to assure water availability, but could be put on hold. Apple Blossom Center East could be put on hold. The Warehouse District developments could be put on hold. The $27 million airport upgrade, 95% paid by the federal government and $10 million water line paid by the state may both be need to be abandoned and the funding forfeited due to the lack of water availability. Additionally, any low-cost housing in the airport area may be, need to be abandoned. L, the city will have to take the risk of censure from the state for not taking measures for additional growth under the requirements of the Growth Management Act. It is possible that the state could step in and do our comprehensive planning for us. M, likewise, the council risks legal challenges from any of the hundreds of property owners in the TIA for perceived damages from the city's failure to provide basic infrastructure services to these properties that are all within the city of Shalan. But I'm not an attorney and I can't give you full advice on what that might mean. N, the citywide comprehensive water system storage and delivery capacity analysis would need to be conducted so that we see, we can help determine who gets to develop and who does not. And I certainly imagine legal challenges would follow. Again, today is the vote only for the establishment of the TIA. Nothing more.
I think, John, you left the Shalan High School out too, because when you talk about development, the hospital's a development, EMS is a development, the business center is a development. It's not somebody sneaking over from somewhere else and throwing something up. This is really up. This is really what this community needs. I know the high school has been trying to get up there for a long time. They ought to stick to a property. So this is an enhancement above and beyond what we can ask the developers to do. I don't want to wait when the high school gets that and we have to put in a booster pump or another booster pump or another reservoir. This, to me, is what needs to be. It's like opening the door, and I, like Mary Signorelli said, we're in this together. This is a door opens. Anybody that can find a way through any kind of funding sources, Public Works Trust Fund, Ecology, Clean Water Department, appropriations from our state legislators, we need your help so that we don't have to build this all the way out. And I think that time is now. June first is a big deal. I think when you look at it, someone says you didn't plan well enough. Well, about twenty years ago, the city took in two hundred acres called Apple Blossom Center, and et cetera, almost mundane until Walmart moved here. And then the business center came in, and then the hospital district did a wonderful thing and got off the hill and put it on flat ground, which they should have probably done forty years ago. So we're going along. It's already borderline on the water because we didn't perceive this happening. Then the people that own Walmart Center said, well, you know, we weren't going to put in housing, but we changed our minds. So here's thirty acres. So at the prescribed destination per acre, that's seven hundred and twenty apartments. Who would have planned that one? How they ever do seven hundred and twenty? I seriously doubt it. Probably the thirty-four percent that's about and around there is Widener's project. He owns about eighty thousand apartments in the country, and he has the property between Walmart and the baseball fields currently designed for his units. There are five hundred of them were built in One Ache, three hundred of them in Leavenworth a couple of years ago, and some more in One Ache. So that's the only definite. If you look at the, and Russ being a banker knows that we're borderline on loaning any money out, the interest is rates. They're looking at a recession over their shoulder. So as far as somebody coming in and building seven hundred, eight hundred, I've heard nine hundred units, having been here seventy-five years, I found that infallible. So we're going to start slow, and we need your input as this goes on. Like everybody said, just merely said, this is the area, and the area is only designed the way it is, is for the reservoir and going over through Union Valley in order to put the pipeline in to provide backup service for the whole north side and then the east side of Shalane. I think this is more emotional than it is anything else, and I hope that we all work this together and find a way without doing any of this and appropriations, Public Works Trust Fund. We looked at Public Works Trust Fund, their interest rates are one point seven, so that's far greater than the six percent you have down the avenue. So I'm going to, I'll say whatever it is and...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm next. First of all, I'd like to hear, if it's possible, I think we have a hospital CFO here. Is that correct? Yes. Can you tell us how much money, we've heard from the consultant that on the no harm rule, can you tell us how much money you project you're going to lose off of TIFF? And again, I know we're not doing TIFF today, but can you, and I just, really, just quick, how much you think you're going to lose?
The situation in which the hospital district loses funds is after the year, if the assessed value goes down from the previous year, the mill rate goes up, and when the apportionment of taxes comes, there's a net decrease. There's so many factors, I can't give you a number, but that's the scenario in which the hospital district or any of the other junior taxing districts would lose.
So again, just make sure I understand. You say you'd lose if the assessed valuation within the TIA goes down?
Assessed valuation within the whole district goes down. Yeah.
Thank you very much. So, and does the fire agree with that? What said? Okay, so I'm not as organized as my colleague, John Olson, but I have a few things I do want to say. First of all, I think it's, I think it's, can be judged as common knowledge that our current water system has been cobbled together for, what, a century? And that it's, if we set out today to design for potable water for consumption and for fire flow, we wouldn't have anything like what we have today. I've heard it said on my short time here that, that this is largely because over the years, and I'm not trying to be derogatory, but over the years, the decisions to do it differently have been punted. And so we have, I think, the way I look at this is we have an opportunity to either punt again, and probably long after I'm dead and gone, somebody else will have to face the full council chamber. Or we can try and do what should have been done years ago and make corrections that make sense or reasonable, and at the same time, make sure that we don't harm anybody in the process. That's my assessment, the way I look at this scenario. I've been convinced that there is a need for, for this reservoir and for the connecting infrastructure as well. The question then is, how do we do it? What is the best way? And my colleagues have far probably better articulated the issue than I could, but in my mind, there's only really two options. One is that we borrow money, secured by, securitized a bond through this method of, that the state's presented with as TIFF. And the other is to raise rates, utility rates, which my understanding is that traditionally, and I know as a resident, I've seen the water rate increase firsthand over the years. And, and what we don't know is how much the rates would have to be increased to achieve the upgrade to our system that we know we all need. But I'm told that it will be significant. That's significant on people who can afford it, including the out-of-town people who own properties here, as well as the retired and elderly who live here who have owned their homes forever, and, and sort of reel under the weight of increased property taxes and increased utility rates, trying to do it on a fixed income. So anyway, I, myself personally, I am concerned about, why I asked the question, about what the real loss would be. And I do think that if there's, if, if, if my vote is sought to use TIFF as a method of financing, I won't vote yes for it unless I'm insured that we have some reasonable way of ensuring that there isn't harm done to our junior taxing districts. I personally supported the hospital through many attempts trying to get it passed. Mary can testify to that support. I signed in my yard and did whatever I could do to help support the hospital, and I'm really glad that it's here. And I don't want it to be harmed in any way. For the fire folks, some of you may know, I spent my entire life in public safety. In 2008, Washington State Council of Firefighters awarded me with the Jack Waller Award. And if you don't know what that is, you should look that up. But anyway, for lifetime efforts in improving fires, fire service. So I'm not against fire, public safety, despite the fact that we had somebody, and I don't know who, and probably no one would admit to it anyway, paid to have anonymous calls made to our phones accusing us all of being thieves and trying to line our pockets with your tax dollars, which I was offended by. I'm glad to say that, and I'm proud to say that publicly, I was offended by that greatly. Because at the end of the day, we all here are committed to doing what is the best. It's part of our oath and the reason we're here. Be much easier for me to be at my home up on Emerson Street, working on my yard, but, but I am committed to this community, and I'm committed to doing the right thing for the citizens of this community. And if that means fixing a water system so that my grandchildren and great-grandchildren have good, safe water and good fire flow, regardless of how many people are mad at me, that's how I'm going to cast my vote. So anyway, that's, that's my position on this issue, and I'd love to hear from anybody who wants to tell me how this, how they would recommend we fund this. And if it's, as I heard someone say in one previous meeting, that we should be passing a bond, raise your hand to start the chairman of the bond committee and get out there, raise funds, and start beating the pavement. But again, in my belief, we have just a couple of ways of dealing with this, legitimate ways of dealing with this, and I'm not in favor of punting for the next generation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I, I'm one who is, I guess I want to start by saying how much, over my five years on council, I've come to respect our Public Works Director Jake, and, and over the last few years working with John Ajax. These are not guys that are, these are, this, the entire staff, I think, is invested in our community and our town, and they are not influenced by big developers. They're not selling anybody out. And so when I talk to them about the importance of the water line to the community and the reservoir, I have a lot of trust. I have to put a lot of stock into their opinion there because they're professionals. They work with our infrastructure every day. And, and so I'm, I'm convinced that, that the reservoir project, the water line project, connecting it to the rest of the city are very important. One of the things with small-town government that is comforting is that you're, the issues are actually pretty simple. You got to keep the water running. Got, when you flush the toilet, you want it to run downhill, and you got to, you got to keep your roads up, up, up to grade, and, and, and those are our primary things. Water is, is, is critical to the hospital. It's critical to the fire department, and maintaining pressure is something we have to be mindful of. And so I don't think this project is just a sell-out to Widener. Will they take advantage of it? Yes. Will the hospital take advantage of it? Yes. Will the fire department benefit from it? Yes. Will the people of Suncrest benefit from it? Yes. So there's benefits throughout the Shalane Valley to moving ahead with this project. The question is, how do we pay for it? And, and I'm one who's very, been very skeptical, and I remain very skeptical that the tax increment financing is, is the wrong tool to do this. I, I look at it as a way to bring investment to areas where there isn't sufficient investment already. And I think, I think part of the division that we're seeing in the community is a result of, of the proposal to use this tool that that may not really be, we're kind of using a, well, we're using the wrong tool. However, we, you know, we, we're at a, at a, at a junction here where we, you know, we need to examine all of the options available to us. We've come down a long road here looking at this. We need to come together as a community. We're a small town in an isolated rural valley. We can't have a lot of division and finger pointing. It's dismaying when certain people use misinformation to sow distrust. We have to trust each other. And, and I think, I, I am going to support creation of the TIFF at this time. As I said, I remain extremely skeptical that this is the best way to go. We've spent nearly, we're, we're planning on spending nearly nine million dollars to get water to the airport. And, and that did not require a TIFF. We were able to, to come up with the funds of that with a partnership between the state, federal government, the port district, and Shalane. And I think that is the kind of partnership that we need to work on to get this infrastructure done. I believe it is more critical than bringing water to the airport. It's, 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 it's basic public health and safety need. The airport water line is not. So if we can create that partnership to build a water line to the airport, I would hope that we build the same partnership to get this done without having to burden our junior taxing districts. I know you guys, both the fire and the hospital, as well as, as the other districts are, are struggling. It's, it's a constant struggle. And so out of deference to making sure we have all the tools available to us over the next years, I'm going to support this. I, I, I do not believe we should fund entire amount or perhaps even half of the entire amount with this mechanism, and, and, and I'm hopeful that we can avoid employing this mechanism at all. The danger is, we pass this, and then we get, we get soft. We figure, well, we've got a plan now. We'll just borrow this money, shift the burden on to the other districts to the extent that that's, and, and move on. But I, I'm, I'm hopeful, I trust our staff and, and the future council to make the right decisions over the next year in terms of exactly how we finance it. So all I have to say.
I am in support of establishing this ordinance. I'm definitely not ready to support debt at any rate. Clearly, we all have, with the crew that we have here, everybody's really concerned, and we all need to come to a common meeting ground and starting meetings where we can all share information, research. We have grant writers here. It's, it's important. It's obvious that we all need water. Nobody has disputed that. The wire is one thing on this. For the mitigation, that I had a question on, following, let's see here, from the Apple Blossom Center Phase, thank you, Apple Blossom Center Phase One, and thereafter, following each five-year period during a TIA is expired. It's five years, kind of long. Is it, can we change that so it's sooner?
That's have the council work on to make sure that the mitigation is exactly like you want before we ever enter into any kind of debt. So
Yeah.
It would be a separate, it would be a separate issue that you guys, this is, this is the mitigation, which is what we use for it.
Nothing happens very quickly in a government world. So I would say for five years, for somebody out there, five years for government, we may get plans in two for that and go on with our financing. So I, I think five years is, hopefully we'll have this all sorted out quicker than then, but I would hate to shortchange it and have some kind of delays in services and whatever, and get caught up in the end run when we're getting right close to the finish.
I just would hate to see this opportunity pass us by in case we need it, if it all works out. And I agree with Aaron, we need to have a definitive answer, all of us together before December one or by December one, because we need this water and we need to know how to pay it. And John is
John, is your re, uh, research with the numbers you spent last night with us, you are a brilliant man. And if anybody is questioning the numbers and how you might be affected, you need, call, call him. You won't, you won't question it anymore. And now that we have time, if this is passed, we can do that.
Anyone else? At that rate, is somebody interested in making a?
I'll make a motion because I have things that I want to add on to this ordinance. Um, I feel like there's, well, it's very clear, there's still, um, concern and angst around this, and I also don't want this to drag on. Um, so I'll be adding deadlines and, you know, call to the market on December one uh, for us to have detailed mitigation agreements in place, more so than what's in the ordinance right now, as well as, um, coming back to council on December one for us to approve or repeal moving this forward. So with that, I would say I move to adopt ordinance number 2023-1607 with a commitment to develop detailed mitigation agreements with emergency services and a review on December one to approve or repeal this ordinance.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It appears at six to one, that passes. I think with any other business left to do, this meeting is adjourned. Wade, do we have anything else?
Oh, that's it. That was all business today. Thanks.
As a parting shot, please stay with us. We need all of you working with us. If you can find the money down in some rattle, please point it out because we're going to be looking everywhere. Thank you.